Mr. White?
Present.
Mr. DeSona?
Present.
Mr. Coles?
Present.
Mr. Callen?
Present.
Mrs. Carleton?
Mr. Callen, we have the call. The first motion except for notice from the last paper meeting on January 16th, 2018, motion is in our.
So move.
Second.
All of favor, say hi, oh, the high standard. First case this evening will be Mahan Street. It's reconsideration, no information, and presiding office will be Mr. Curly.
Motion made for reconsideration.
My vote for reconsideration, Mr. Chairman.
Please call the roll. Mr. White?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. DeSona? Mr. Coles? Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snowdon?
Yes.
It's reconsidered.
Yes, it's reconsidered.
Chairman, I'd like to say a few words to begin with that there's some new information, and I'd like to ask Attorney McLauren to come forward and reconsider.
Well, you had requested at the last meeting, and some of the other members joined with you, but we did follow up and do a plan. We did it for two reasons. One, because you would ask for it, but secondly, to show Mrs. Snowdon, who is the rebuttal, how it was possible for her to pack and not utilize the right-of-way. So I believe that plan was sent to the board and to all of you. So that was done. Attorney McGraw, who represents Mrs. Snowdon, and I've spoken with her, and I've spoken with my clients, and we also did some further research. We really couldn't find anything at the Lynn Public Library, where we searched the microfiche in newspapers in 1939 to try to find whether it was proper notice, even though the statutes in 1939 were not the same statute just now. But some of that research has led my clients to reconsider and ask that you allow them to withdraw without prejudice, that they are going to conform to the packing, conform to a two-family, and proceed as they can under the state building code and under the zone ordinance, and there's no need for you to take any action or any further action because they're not seeking relief at this time.
Mr. Curly gonna come back before the board?
Are you saying you want to withdraw without prejudice?
Correct.
I spoke with Mrs. Chairman, you'll be needing to withdraw without prejudice.
You made a motion?
Yes.
Without all prejudice? Why don't you start with the end of the petition? So you just, they don't want to live their family, they're just gonna keep the two-family, is that it?
We think it's, we think it was both lawful as a three and a two, but we're gonna keep it as a two for the time, because that doesn't require relief. In fact, we're now in a position where we have more parking than were required, because it's been, it precedes the 1964 ordinance. We have onsite parking, and we have access to that parking, because it's undisputed that the plan once was, there were two lots, and I provided the board with it. The lots were one lot in 1933. There was one lot with three homes on it. 135, 139, and 141. 139 and 141, there was a front house and a back house. 1946, the property was conveyed to a family named Olenoff. Mr. Olenoff divided the property, and this is registered land, so it's a land court claim, into two lots, Lot A, which became Mrs. Snowdon's 135, and Lot B, which became 139 and 141. He also created the right-of-way, which Mrs. Snowdon's lot is subject to, and which this lot has the benefit of, and that's the discussion we had about how to access off Two to Street, the rear of this property. So that's unquestioned. I think Attorney McGraw has claimed that to Mrs. Snowdon. I know Mrs. Snowdon's here tonight because she understands that the right-of-way exists. The problem was, for many years, she had used the right-of-way not to pass over, but to pack on. And one of the attributes of registered land is that you cannot get adverse possession, which means you own it because you used it, or what they call an easement by prescription, which means you own it because you used it, not against registered land. And I think the concern that people had, while I share the concern about parking in the area, the only person who ultimately could be deprived parking is Mrs. Snowdon, because we have two spaces that we've had since time in Memorial in the front driveway, and we have the space that we have access to in the rear, all of which go with the building. We have the benefit, at least right now, of adjoining spaces. Mrs. Snowdon doesn't have that. And I think her concern was that if she couldn't park in the right-of-way, where could she park? And the plan that we sent to you shows that, notwithstanding the fact that she has a three-family, and she has a need for additional parking, that she can accommodate a parking space for herself and for her tenant. And so Attorney McGraw wanted that information, and Mr. Callen wanted that, we provided that, but in terms of proceeding, we proceeded, because no good deed goes unpunished, with what the building inspector told us to do. And we've already done it. He said put in, and you were there, put in a second meeting to leave, as we did. And then if the building were to become a use classification change, the building would have to be sprinkled and hardwired, my people were prepared to do that. So the only remaining issue, it seems, was this parking one, and Mrs. Snowdon's concern, and I think her concern has been at least reduced or mitigated, because she now knows that she, while we need access to get to our space at the rear, it doesn't deprive her of the ability to park either on her land or to jot out a little into the, to right-of-way, but she's not impeding access. And as long as she's not impeding access, then we have the spaces we need. So we're satisfied that we have for our use the spaces we need. As far as the impact on the neighborhood of our other people, or what their requirements are, we're only speaking about the property we have. But it came about because they were all one lot. They were all owned by one person who, back in 1946, divided. Previous to that, the owner had come to the Board of Appeals and gotten approval for the front house, 139, and for the back house, 141. The back house has many uses. It was a gazebo, you can see, I think, if you went out there. It was a stable at one time, it was a sauna or a hot tub. It's gone. So there's only one house now on Lot B. That's a home that was the subject of the petition, and there's only one home on Lot A, that's Mrs. Snowdon's. And so as far as those folks go, they've resolved any issues they have about access to the parking and where the parking onsite can and cannot be. And so for those reasons, they don't choose to proceed.
Oh, Mrs. Snowdon, she has a three-family?
It's being used as a three-family.
So that's why she only cares about one tenant? Well, there's a parking for her, which you've said she could park in the right-of-way, underneath her deck, and I see now there's another space out here that doesn't exist now, but it will.
She could use that, yeah.
But what about the third, if it's a three-family?
Well, I only was aware from her of, and they indicated to me that she had eight tenants, but there are records here that say it was a two-family, it was a three-family, and I think it is being used as a three-family. But I can't speak other than what she expressed to me was a concern about where, quote, "she could park and her tenant could park," and I think we addressed that.
So you said you gotta take the heating down?
It's gone. Yep, it's gone.
Why would we make a motion, why would we vote on withdrawing it when we've already denied it?
Well, people, however you like.
I'm asking, I'm saying, is that what we're looking at doing? Is that what, I'm asking, is that what?
Well, that's what he's asking, to withdraw without prejudice.
It's not unusual, either.
To withdraw after the nine? Pardon me? To withdraw after the nine?
Yeah, right. We did a hot gun speed recently.
Because of what's coming?
Because we're not asking you to do anything.
Yeah, he's asking to withdraw without prejudice, which we do all the time.
Which means he can come back at any time, come back next week if he wants.
I second the motion.
Yep.
Please call the roll. Mr. White?
Yes, to withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. DeSona?
No.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Curly?
You have, it's a procedural vote. Okay, next case.
Is that right, Mr. Lamont?
That's correct, it's a procedural motion to withdraw.
Thank you, thank you for coming down.
I can't find my sheet, I couldn't, I'll stop you.
The next case tonight will be case number 9812, Wyman Street. Now, Mr. Coles, he was, could you read the advertisement?
For which one?
On Wyman Street.
Sure, petition to Neighborhood Development Associates?
Jean, yes.
To allow subdivision of an existing lot in a zoning district, our court creating four undersized lots, having less than required frontage, and to allow construction of a single-family dwelling on each. Lot one will have 4,156 square feet, 55.8 frontage. Lot two will have 6,933 square feet with 55.47 feet frontage. Lot three will have 6,802 square foot with 55.30 frontage, and Lot four will have 4,000 square feet with 50-foot frontage.
Thank you. Our chairman is now, will you go as a favor? Please state your name and address.
My name is Peggy Phelps, representing Neighborhood Development Associates, and we're here tonight to ask for permission to build four single-family homes. My associate is Chuck Fay from Passus and Fay, and the architect is John Crowell from Deer Hill.
And his address?
60 Lewish Street in Lynn, Mass.
Thank you.
And John says?
40 Lowell Street in Peavy, Mass.
Who is it?
They, John Crowell.
Oh, okay, all right.
From Deer Hill.
But you have the floor.
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
We're here tonight to request permission to build four single-family homes on undersized lots with less than the required frontage. We purchased this land from General Electric. It is one of three passes that we negotiated with GE in the Lower Westland area, and it's part of a larger redevelopment and revitalization program that we're sponsoring in the neighborhood. So I prepared a rendering so that you could actually see what the homes look like. They're very similar in size and shape to the existing homes in the neighborhood, and the lots are 4,000 square feet, and those are also consistent with the lot sizes in the neighborhood. And then Mr. Fay will run through.
Actually, what I have, they have two clear, this is the 1922 clearing of the site. These two homes are still here, the front on West Neptune, and then there was originally seven houses on the property with smaller lots and stuff, with a little right-of-way coming into the back.
And most of those were multiple families, two- and three-family homes, so there were quite a few units on that property. They were demolished. GE bought all these properties, demolished them, and used this as excess parking, surplus parking.
What year?
1973.
And the other clearing you present tonight is the site development clearing. Personally, the site is pre- result of two businesses, parking lot, and, of course, we have a wood drum with individual two-car parking on the sides, porch, a deck, a rock, and the rest of the site will all be removed and all be landscaped, grass, cleaning, and another, you know.
All the way back?
All the way back to the front.
Mr. Fay, are you gonna have paving stones around too, as well as the patuminous concrete?
We always do the, this front walk at the pavers, and we always do the walk to the backyard pavers, and then the only thing that's patuminous is the drywall.
So you'd be going, you're usual there, but you've been doing a good job around the city.
Thank you, thank you. The home is six rooms, three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms, and a laundry room on first floor. So it has this simple space. And these will be sold to first-time buyers.
Have you had any environmental issues with the site?
No, there are no, this is a clean site. We do have other sites that we purchased from GE that do have some environmental concerns, but this one is not. We have a clean, double help on this site.
No oil tanks?
No oil tank, no TCD, nothing. It's a good site.
And the lot was purchased from GE?
Purchased from GE.
Are they looking to unload it?
Yeah, GE is really, in the last couple of years, has really been able to unload all the sites that they're not using. So they still have quite a few sites in their neighborhood that do have environmental concerns. They'll sort through those and then sell the properties that are sellable.
And when you said that first-time home buyers, is it any subsidized?
No, they're not subsidized. They're market rate houses. They're not subsidized homes. And in fact, I mean, we did a lot of thought when we planned this development. What we wanted to do is increase the homeownership rate in that area, so, because it's a very high rental, it's actually the highest rental percentage in the city, this area that we're concentrating in, which spans from Oakville to Minot and Weston to Bennett. So it's just that.
Is it near Oakville there?
It's Oakville, Minot, that's where we're referring to right now. It's, you know, south of McDonough Square. And it has a very high renter market, so what we're trying to do is turn that around a little bit, so we can increase the homeownership. So everything that we do in this area, as far as development, will be homeownership. We won't sponsor any rental facilities.
Peggy, this isn't a criticism, don't take it as a criticism, it's just an observance.
Okay.
I can ride all through Lynn, and I know every house that you people built, because they all look alike.
Yeah, I know, this is, I think.
How can you do something a little different?
You know why? I'll tell you, this house works well, and I think when you find something that works well, it just fits into the neighborhood.
Can't change the front of it a little bit, I think?
Excuse me, if anyone wants to talk to each other along the hallway, because these people have the floor, look, pay attention to them. In the back there, where you're having a meeting, please.
I'm sorry, Jean, I didn't hear the last thing you said. I didn't hear the last thing you said.
I said, couldn't you change the front of it a little?
Of course.
There has to be something that you can do.
You know, absolutely, you can absolutely change the front, but the house size itself, the dimensions would be exactly the same.
Oh, I don't mean that, I just mean.
Yep, we have, I have no problem, John, he's a master, he can certainly do that.
You know what I'm saying?
Of course I do, of course I do.
Well, I noticed to Jean's point, I noticed you have the first two on the right are identical, and then the third one, going from right to left, is, has a stair. I just thought, I thought maybe you put the, you know, do it every other one, so these two are the same, then.
It might depend where the telephone poles are, maybe other things, and where, I'm trying to say that.
Definitely, definitely. You see, you have to wait for it, I was more concerned of cars going up the street and the lights starting even to the, working to the house.
Brake, brake.
Brake, brake.
Brake, brake.
Good thinking, yeah, good thinking.
And Mrs. Carleton, you can certainly, certainly change the, the house design, that's not a common issue at all.
What kind of landscaping you gonna have?
We.
With all this backyard here?
It'll all be grass.
Okay, and what else?
And what we do is we do all the shrubbery around the front, and in this area too, the biggest, we actually put together an action plan, and part of the action plan is we're gonna plant 100 trees in this area. So this, what we're gonna do is create the canopy of trees on each street, because years ago, that's what it was, it was beautiful tree-lined street, so we're trying to bring that, all that. So we'll have quite a few trees all up and down Minot Street and Weston Neptune Street. So this is, this is really a true rendering. So this is, and we're actually, like, we're gonna focus on most of the houses that sit on a corner, because we noticed in the area, those houses should be the statement for the street, and they're not. So we're gonna focus a lot of attention on those corner houses with nice fencing and trees and landscaping.
And let's, please help to clean the air.
They certainly do, they certainly do. And it does, doing a lot of research on the trees, there's 22 health hazards, 22 health components to trees, and one of that is that it slows down traffic, it, you know, you breathe better, you know, so just, I'll just get a list if you know.
I'd love to see that.
Yeah, I'll tell you, when I started to look into it, I was amazed myself. So I tell everybody, there's 22, yeah, 22 benefits of trees. So we usually do a lot of landscaping. Maybe help you out in the landscaping.
Okay, so you will work into changing the facade?
We will look into changing the facade, absolutely.
Do they, do they have decks?
They do, they have a 12-by-12 deck on the back.
That's where the deck is, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other members have questions for the petition? Anyone, anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition? Here and now, no? In favor? Here and now, opposed, 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 opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition, yes?
Yeah.
Well, if you might be able to state your name and address.
My name is Charles Self, I live on 135 West Neptune. Lived there about 35 years. My wife has lived there her whole life on the street. I have the single-family house that abuts all of it, most of it, and the people next door who couldn't come because they're working.
Yeah, could you show us on the plan, Ray, on those?
Oh, sure, I haven't seen it. It's 135, this one here?
I'm 135, this one here.
Okay, can you show that to all the members?
So you can leave lots to one house?
Yes.
Okay, you may move, Steve.
All right, there's a couple of problems. Traffic study, the traffic there is incredible going down that street, and nobody has any parking, there's fistfights in the summertime about parking in the area, so I'm worried about that. Also, my piping goes across that entire, and the last time GE was in there testing it, and I said to them, there's only houses there, there's nothing, no oil, there's no spills, what are you testing for? They said they had to. It broke the pipes up.
What kind of piping are you talking about?
Sewer piping, that goes underneath that property, right outside.
Yes, sir, this is your property?
Yes, sir, I've had to refu-
Do you have a plan of that, so you could look at?
No, sir, I don't, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, in order to have any action with us, you have to show us proof.
Yes, Mr. Callen.
If you don't have it.
Yep.
All right, continue.
Well, we're just worried about that, in the parking problem, and then we looked at the house, and it's right, it's right on top of us. So we talked to everybody in the neighborhood about it. 99.5 percent, everyone is excited about it, wants it to be there. What we're worried about is little things like that, the parking, and if they're gonna have an egress onto West Neptune Street, we'll use it as a problem.
Let me explain it.
Yes, sir.
As far as the parking, they satisfy what the city or county requires for a parking.
Okay.
Okay, so, other than that, you can continue, I'm not interrupting you, but you have to understand, they have proper parking.
Beautiful. And what we're worried about is, like, a few nights ago, and it's happened three or four times since I've lived there, a drunk comes down the street on a Saturday night or Sunday morning, hits over cars.
You gotta stay on the, we have no control, you call the police if that happens.
Right, exactly. But what I'm trying to do is make the point of, we've got a traffic problem down there, and, you know, it's gonna affect everybody. And the people across the street, the two, three families right across the street, notorious drug houses, we've called the police a million times, and it's constantly going on.
We can't help you on that.
All right, but what I'm trying to say is, all we really care about is, you know where West Neptune Street is, on that corner of Minot? They don't want to see a driveway coming onto West Neptune Street.
Can I show you something?
Yep.
No, you have to show him that, that, yeah, that you showed, yeah, see that, that's what it's gonna look like. See, you couldn't see that, because they were facing it towards us.
Right, but is there gonna be a driveway on West Neptune?
Yes.
There's gonna be a problem, because all the, the three single families and the two families, that's the only thing they don't want. They don't, they don't want a driveway there.
Who is there?
You have, um, the Che family, the Ryan family.
Are they here too?
No, I told them I would come up and speak for them.
Well, do you approve of this, rendering here?
Yep. Except, we approve, we don't approve of this, that's what we don't approve of.
The driveway to-
On West Neptune.
Right next to our-
There was never a driveway, when those houses were there, it was always on Minot Street.
Yeah.
But this is, this is actually, this goes into the GE gate, so nobody actually comes down there unless they live there.
Yeah.
So for this person to back out of their street, it's gonna be no problem getting in and out.
I wondered, I wondered.
There's an ambulatory sign there, and we are gonna put there, it says no parking there because of emergency vehicles, and you're gonna put, take the sign down and put a driveway in?
Wait a minute, we're not gonna do any, it's not under our jurisdiction. They have no control over the streets, you know who has the control? City Council.
Right.
We have control over half the streets, and that's what they're here for.
Well, is there a further meeting for, like, that stuff, for parking and all that, or?
It's right here, they're showing it.
Can I just say one thing? We've actually had two neighborhood meetings in this area. The first meeting, we had seven people show up, the second meeting, we had four.
Yeah, we didn't know anything about it, we weren't aware.
We dropped the flyers, we actually made big posters, the size, the size of this poster right there, put them on the telephone poles.
Did they get a notice?
Yes, they did, everybody got a notice.
Oh, they, they're in the butter, right?
They're in the butter, yes.
Oh, they have a butter for the butter.
They're in a butter, right.
That's how driveway would be, right next to this driveway where they wanna put.
Right, it's, you have no idea what, how we're gonna have to live right there like that. No, it's not, why can't you put the driveway over here? It's a Minot Street deal, why doesn't that-
Because then it ruins their yard, they don't get a yard, they'll have, when the driveway can go right here, and they go right into their houses.
This should probably be three houses.
That's the only problem, that's our only problem. We're all gonna fight it, all the abutters are gonna fight that one thing. Other than that, it's a great project. That's the only problem.
Anybody in the house here opposed to this petition? Anyone else here opposed to this petition? Anyone else here opposed to this petition? Here and now, I close the hearing. What is the wish of the board?
Can I ask a question? Is there no, so there's no feasibility to have the driveway going on West Street?
I don't believe it makes sense to put it there.
Mr. Chairman? I think that question should be answered by Mr. Fay, the answer there. Could you answer that question?
I just wanna say one thing, by the way this is laid out, it gives you maximum privacy, because you've got your driveway plus their driveway before you see their house. If you wanna push the house over, then you're talking, you know, talking, this building would be a lot closer to your, to your house.
The lot is so small, it looks like, actually.
It's actually bigger than your lot.
And their driveway sits right here.
Yeah.
It is a wood fence there, this is our driveway here, it's gonna be some 15, 18 feet between the driveways.
That's what I'm saying.
And there is a-
Does that park this place over there?
There is.
Which means?
There could be a, the worst, when we were out doing the survey work, there was a little big car parked on the street, there is a no parking sign right there on the plan, may have relocated, put the driveway in.
This is no parking sign?
And there was a no parking sign right there, yeah, but there was a car parked, or it was, it was there like two or three months ago.
What's the parking?
There's no parking, there was a resident park, I can't remember, it was a regular sign, and there was one car parked, it was over here someplace, and that was there like four or five hours, I'm trying to remember, so they were.
So you had to refence too, right?
I don't know, the fence is not, they usually put fences up, they have.
I usually say, you have to put a fence, you have to put a fence.
They're gonna put a new fence before us, they, they like to put a new fence.
Motion on the floor.
Wait a minute, you gotta, he has the privilege.
Yes, sir.
We can't start it now, you went back and forth.
Oh, no, no, I can, it's Mr. Callen.
I'd like to ask a gentleman.
Go ahead, who do you want to ask?
Is it a no parking sign, or is it a- Is it a no parking sign, or is it a residential no parking?
It's a no parking from here to the corner, because right across is an emergency ambulance parking sign for Officer Ryan's mother and younger brother. They, and ambulance is always being called there to take them away. So they, P. Capano made that space open, because the fire trucks always get there before the ambulance. So they had to place the park. And, I don't know, they've only, like, ten times this year, usually it's like twenty times a year.
And there's a dead end sign?
It is a dead end. It's a dead end.
Dead end street. So anyone who goes down, they'll tell Steve to make a U-turn or...
Is there a dead end sign?
Yes, sir. Right on the corner.
Anyone else have any questions on the board? And then...
Mr. Chairman, motion approved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Shola, to approve, to grant, signed by Mr. Cole. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Sono?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mrs. Crowley?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Petition has been granted by unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Next case, let's see your name. Case number 9815426 Boston Street. Mr. Cole, can you read the printing on that?
Certainly. Someone's quiet down? Case number 9815426 Boston Street. Petition of Winter Property Services LLC seen by its attorney, Samuel A. Vitale, to allow conversion of an existing mixed-use structure to four residential units in the garage in zoning District H1, where the existing structure encroaches upon the minimum front and side yard setbacks.
Thank you. Probably here is now one of those in favor?
I'm Attorney Vitale, looking at him all now. He's a principal of Winter Properties. Quires this building. Most people who are residents, at least who are familiar with the site, on the corner from Federal, in Boston Street, it joins the bus, the Hybernian hall. It's in an industrial zone that's across the street from it. And that is before it was sometimes a little gas station being refurbished. The history of the property is such that it has been one of mixed use. It was, for those of you that are long memories, it was Fred's tire. It was most recently an electrical contractor. Basically, most of the uses related to it.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I ask you to shut that door, please?
Uh, well, they related, uh, to the fact that there were a couple of residences there, two dwellings.
Thank you.
So over the years, it's had mixed use. Uh, back in January, at Marlon Arby's property, in late fall of 2017, we went to the City Council. When we went to the City Council, it is that, with respect to the use, what he proposed is a residential use, and under the Zone Ordinance, a residential use and industrial district required City Council consent. City Council granted consent, uh, on January the ninth for the proposal that we've out before you. We satisfied the onsite parking requirements. One other thing you may have noticed when you were there, and certainly Mr. Marlon Arby noted from the first day he was there, is that the prior owner had fenced the property to the detriment of his neighbors, which are essentially the Hybernians who own lots of the joint. The impact of that fence on the Hybernians was that it hampered their access to their handicap, only handicap access area. It limited their ability to go from one property that they owned to the other. And, in a sense, we really don't know the reason that the fence was split up. The first time I met Peter, I've decided, we said we'd take the fence down, because we didn't see why it was done, other than spite. We didn't really know. And then, in terms of issues, our only real concern was that we satisfied the onsite parking requirement, which we can do. The, uh, the lot being on corner has, under the Zone Ordinance, two fronts. The front's on Boston and the front's on Federal. But the building is there. Nothing's changed in terms of the footprint of the building. The building is gonna go up in height, but not exceed the Zone Ordinance requirement. So the footprint remains the same, the lot remains the same. But because now the use has changed, we don't conform to residential uses. And the building never met, on one side, the front setback. And then, there's an ordinance that says if you were but along the street line, notwithstanding the fact that you're on an industrial lot or a business lot, a lots of the Zone Ordinance for residential purposes, then you gotta have a sideline of seven and a half. So we have it on one side, but we don't on the other. So after the City Council, the next step would be to go to South Lane Review, because it's not a one-family or two-family, and anything more than that requires Site Plan Review, and anything to 5,000 square feet, even though we're not actually having more spaces, and we've talked about that in the past. So we have onsite parking. We have a building that's footprint is the same. Its use is going to be increased for the residential purpose. And, uh, because the current structure is non-conforming, we came to you to get relief for the front setback on one side, and for the side on the other. Along the way, we've been out to the site, we met with members of the Hybernians, and, uh, they were represented in this matter by Attorney Paul Keating, I think, who's known to you. And he and I discussed, along with members of the Hybernians, providing them with what they would need to satisfy their needs. There's another couple of anomalies about this lot. One is that the city has an easement, because Strawberry Brook goes right underneath, in a culvert, in sort of an angle towards the Sargus River. Second is, that notwithstanding what you see, a portion of this lot is registered land, we're back to registered land. And according to the registered land deed, we owned seventy-five feet. So there's like seven feet of no man's land between us and the Hybernians. Neither the Hybernian deed or our deed accounts for this. And we think it's because the city took this right-of-way easement, even on the culvers below the ground. So to the extent that we own the land, we can give relief sought by the Hybernians, which is a plan that I sent to Attorney Keating and I have discussed. And in, sort of a trade-off, here's the trade-off. There was an existing right-of-way on a lot that abuts on Boston Street that once had a house that the Hybernians use now for parking. They own three feet. There's a right-of-way three feet on the land, there's a right-of-way three feet in island. So we have a purpose of using more than three feet, which is to put a roll-off dumpster for the apartments on that spot. So essentially, what we've talked about is a reciprocal agreement, which is that we would extinguish, since the only people who have the benefit or the subject of the right-of-way are the Hybernians and us, we have the ability to extinguish it. It didn't go all the way down. It just went a portion of the way down. We think, and I was explaining to you, there used to be a house back there. So at the time, somebody had a right-of-way to get to that. The house doesn't exist. It's a parking lot now. And, and so, it services Winter Properties' need to eliminate that right-of-way. And in exchange for that, we would give to the Hybernians as a corner, like an isosceles triangle at the upper corner, which would allow them to be able to access, uh, from one lot that they have to the other lot that they have. Where they couldn't really do that, if you saw the way it was configured, and with that fence, just couldn't make a right-angle turn. And then the last portion was, out there in no man's land, this portion that is at the side of actually the Boston Street property, and the side of the Hybernian property. It squeezes their handicapped access, this fence. So, uh, if the fence came down, they just want the ability to cross over that. They had the ability to cross over it until somebody put that fence up. So the offending portions of the fence would be removed. The exchange would be within only a median abut, who surrounds us, the Hybernians, that we would, uh, they would agree to eliminate their portion of that three-foot right-of-way, and we would agree to give them in exchange. And so that's why you have a series of the plans. So we think that we addressed the concerns that were expressed. I know they had some problem, unknown to me, and so I went down there, which is that in the construction of the gas station, the police told the contractor to park the contract vehicles over the weekend in that lot, because, quote, "Nobody's there," but the Hybernians have functions. So we talked with them about, uh... And Peter's got some experience about, because he owns other properties, about surveillance cameras. But surveillance cameras are always like after the fact. And so, that, to the extent that if they wanted, but they didn't, we could have put a fence across. But the construction's almost done on the gas station site. They use it because they rent the hall out on weekends. We don't have any need, other than to put a dumpster down towards the Boston Street side, roll it off once a week. So I think that a combination with our neighbor solved the only problem. And as far as use, we got permission from the City Council. And while we're coming to you about the sideline and the front setback, is that when we get to Site Plan Review, if we don't have that relief, they're gonna say, "You're gonna have to go get a variance, because you're non-conforming as to the sideline and the front setback." So we decided to come to you next, and then if you were to approve, we'd next go to Site Plan Review. But, uh, essentially, the building that you see, and I sent plans that show the various units, the heights, the elevation. I think already have those. I have larger plans that really are the same set that you have. And in terms of uses, I would think that, given the history of this property, that a residential use would be a welcome use. Because, as I say, there have been an auto body shop, an electrical shop, a tire shop. And what you're seeing is the changing character of that area of West Linden. Had many, for many years, industrial uses, and had the accompanying kinds of business that are in industrial districts. And now, with the much improved area, whether it's traffic, market basket, whole neighborhood, like I was across the street with the modern gas station, the whole neighborhood's come up, and that attracts investment. We're talking about an excess of a million? Yeah, an excess of a million dollars to refurbish this property.
Does the process of drive-through then?
Yeah.
Yeah, they cross all, they'll be able to cross all of them down.
Yeah. Because of the angle, there's no way, yeah, you can't wipe it, turn it. Yeah, well, two things were, one was the fence, which comes out on the backside. And then the other was down on the backside, yeah. And then down on the backside, there was this, this proportion of no man's land, which we can only attribute to the city. Took an easement. The fence, Strawberry Brook, was below, and on sort of twenty-two buildings.
This gets you, when you want them to...
Yes, that's Strawberry Brook, yeah. This is a culvert, basically. So because of that, he didn't feel really anything, the culprit is, in case they have to have a go-reap, they have no access to our property. I understand, and that's why I'm so prepared now. The prior owner, from what we know. I mean, he was there when the lot was acquired.
What was that?
The fence. They actually put it up.
The prior owner put that up?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And everyone next door, three of them out the door, and he did it?
Yeah, I mean, if you see it, it's got, like, translucent webbing. I don't know what he was doing. I honestly, I don't know.
It's definitely, uh... Anyone else? You finished, Mr.?
Yes.
Anyone else here favor this? Mr. Marlon Arby, you would favor?
Yes.
Do you wanna make a statement on?
No.
All right.
Someone has to come up for me.
One up. Give your name and address.
I am, that's the public from the Hybernian Club, the Vice President, Don, and the building corporation. And we're in favor of this project here, that we talked to Peter, and everything is...
He's been cooperative.
Very cooperative, you know? And we'd like to have him as a neighbor.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wall?
Yes, I'm Richard Wall, Division President, at Southland. Would be very happy to work with you, be a decent neighbor, back in the neighborhood.
To us, you're a strong one.
I'm sorry, yeah. Be very happy to have a neighbor that's gonna work with us in the neighborhood. I mean, it's, uh, parking is limited around there. We do have some specialty coming up in the next month. There's all sizable events coming up between St. Patrick's Day and a 5K road race in the neighborhood. Just that simple little drive-through there to get to our back lot, or dumpster, or something like that, is critical. And on the other side of that fence going down to Federal Street, I consider that being a safety hazard, where emergency vehicles cannot get into our establishment if need be. And that's the only handicap access on that side of the building for, uh... Because it's a low ramp right into the back hall, the low hall.
Right.
And, um, I consider that a safety violation, the fence there, they're just...
Yes, it definitely is. It's a hazard.
Right.
Is the fence gonna come down?
That's one they're agreeing to take down.
Mr. Marlon Arby, when do you plan to take the fence down?
Uh, I will say in the next week or two. In the next couple of weeks.
Yesterday.
Couple of weeks, you know, because it's a big safety factor for that fire.
Well, the corner situation is already being discussed with the lawyers. We are gonna work right away in the next few days. We're gonna find a solution to have them have a free access from lot to lot. And I'm talking the rest of the fence in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
But we have to go to Plan Review, and you want names?
You have to what?
Site Plan Review, if you guys.
Oh, Site, yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Thank you.
Site you.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Here and now, close your hands. Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Here and now, close your hands, close, close. What is the wish of the board?
Motion by...
Second. By Mr. Wood, to grant, and Mrs. Crowley to second. Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Sono?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Mrs. Crowley?
Yes, Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Thank you for all.
Petition had to be granted by unanimous decision.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Next case, let's see your name.
Yeah, please.
Will be, uh... One step, case number 9833, 17589 Alley Street. Please read.
Which one we doing?
Yeah, the one on Alley Street. It doesn't say much, but...
No, I have petition of 17519 Alley Street LLC to allow an undeveloped lot in zoning District WF1 to be used as a motor vehicle storage lot. That's WF1, seems like waterfront District 1.
Anything? Is there not one of those in favor?
Uh, good evening, everybody. My name's Thomas Damakis. I'm an attorney in Lynn with Offices at 56 Central Avenue, and I'm representing the petitioner. That LLC is owned by my cousin, the tastefully named Tom Damakis, who owns Old Neighborhood Foods on Water Hill Street. Uh, that used to be, as you all know, the Hood Plant. And after that, it was owned by East Coast Lobster. My cousin purchased it about five years ago, with plans of developing that property. He ended up knocking the old... First, he was gonna renovate the building, but it was so misshapen and, um, budget different levels, that he just ended up knocking it down. And then when he was making plans to develop it, it turned out that because of the flooding on Alley Street, the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission is under an EPA order to fix the storm drainage issues there. And until they do it, it doesn't make sense for anybody to build anything at that end of Valley Street. So, um, talking to Counselor Capano, the biggest issue that the residents of Valley Street have is the number of cars on the street. So, uh, the petitioner is using this as a parking lot. Uh, about a hundred fifty cars, maybe two hundred cars, are the overflow from Pride Chevrolet on the Linway. In addition to which, there's a body shop across... In addition to which, there's a body shop across the street owned by a gentleman named Nixon. Is he here today?
He's there.
Okay. And Mr. Nixon rents 40 spaces, I believe it is, from my cousin, and if he didn't have those spaces in that lot, according to what Councilor Capano tells me, there wouldn't be any place to park the 40 cars that he's parking there except on the street. And my cousin parks some of his old neighborhood vehicles there, and then the other people that park there, there are three or four landscapers or tree surgeons that have small businesses in Lynn, they're residents of Lynn, they have small businesses in Lynn, they have no place to park their trucks except on the street. So, by allowing them to park there, he gets their trucks off the street, which is a betterment of the neighborhood. He'll develop the lot as soon as the Water and Sewer Commission takes care of the flooding issues, but right now, there's nothing he can do with it. So, it seems that this is a good thing for the neighborhood because it gets a lot of cars off the street.
What happens when he develops the property?
Right.
Not just all these cars that's great coming off the street now, but when he wants to develop the property in a year, two years, whenever the sewer gets fixed, what is the 40 cars over here plus all these landscapers, where do they go?
If he develops the property, he's gonna develop it in such a way that it's gonna be a benefit for the city of Lynn. He's either gonna create jobs, one idea that he's tossed around is to do a similar thing to what Nick Menino did at Lynn Lumber, which is a business park for businesses that desperately need, and what Jerry Raffelli's doing down on River Street, and there's a crying need for that. Another, I'm not saying he's gonna do that, but that's the most recent idea he's discussed with me. And to answer your question, it's gonna be the same situation as it was when the hood plant was there, or when East Coast Lobster was there, which is, the only people that could park there were the employees and customers of those companies.
I don't disagree with you, I'm just wondering why you're speaking to how it's a benefit when it's not a lot, it's not a permanent solution, it's just a short-term benefit for your client, not for anything else.
It's a short-term benefit for the neighborhood, too. It's better than fencing off the lot, keeping it a vacant lot and not allowing anybody to park there. Who knows when that's gonna get improved, you know?
Mr. Lee, maybe I can throw some light on your question. I talked with Councilor Capano at four o'clock this afternoon about everything, he said everything hinges on them redoing Alley Street, the underground, the utilities, the sewer, the storm, the water, nothing can be developed down there without that. And he said he, although he don't like cars parked there, he says they've been doing a great job keeping the place clean, and he'd be willing to agree to three years of that temporary approval. And then if they were finished with the work on Alley Street, then they could go to a different, you could appear before the board again and ask for an extension if you have.
You know, that's consistent with our intent, which is that this be a temporary solution to a problem.
Right, but this is what Councilor Capano wants.
He didn't mention that to me, but I obviously...
He did to me, I'm just...
But obviously, yeah, you know, I credit everything that you're saying. But it seems to me that it makes a little bit more sense, or at least it would make me happier, I don't know if it makes any more sense, to say that this temporary use will be allowed until the infrastructure is redone, so that I don't have to come back here in three years. It's good for business and good for the legal fees, but...
Yeah, I know, but he didn't say that, and we'd have to continue it, and we don't wanna do that.
No, we don't wanna do that.
Yeah. What's, all I'm suggesting is, he's leaving that open-ended, that if things weren't straightened out on Alley Street, that, you know, you could increase that amount of time. So he's leaving it open. He says, you know, they're good people there, whoever's in that area, this gentleman, and they're looking after the area. And he lives just on the street, he's by there all the time, as you well know.
Right.
So, I mean, my own idea, the members, is what the white council wants, and I think...
Hey, Mr. Capano, you know, he's heavily invested in that ward because he does live there, he's lived there pretty much his whole life, and anything, anything he wants is fine with me, so...
How long have all those cars been parked in that lot right now?
For quite a while, you know. What happened was, I don't think anybody realized that you couldn't have a parking lot or a vehicle storage lot in Lynn, and Mr. Mookie, the deputy building commissioner, brought it to Pride Chevrolet's attention, and Pride Chevrolet contacted my cousin, and they contacted me, and they told me to get the ball rolling. I don't know the exact answer to your question, Mrs. Crowley, but I know it's been for at least several months.
So this gentleman here has been parking his 40 cars in that lot for, where did you park the cars before they were in that lot? I'm sorry?
Excuse me, could you give your name and address for the record?
It's 178 Alley Street, my shop, the Collusion Auto Repair. And the spaces that he's talking about is two, one across the street, one's on the left and one's over right, that I'm renting for his cousin.
So, but where were your cars being parked before?
When we got the chance to speak, that's why my attorney, to represent me, and we're gonna make the issue there.
Is this your attorney next to you? Is this your attorney next to you? Can you give us your name and address?
Do you think we're gonna turn in the case of sound? Three blocks from...
Thank you very much.
How many parking spaces do you lease in this lot, in this style?
I have many, I have many, but I don't have no more than 20 cars there. And the reason is because I do a lot of car dealerships. So, my cars there now, they have loaners, and that's the only reason in that space. But to answer your question, I was parking before Ray Dantso, the Nair Brothers, used to be when your cousin bought the property, which is adjacent to my yard. When we had the chance to speak, that's why my attorney's here, so we can argue the issue here.
So, in other words, you have a lot next to it, Alby Benia used to run his...
That's funny, he's lost attention if he wants to park cars there, according to his cousin.
How many contractor spaces do you rent, other than the undisclosed amount of spaces that this gentleman rents, because you have one member and he has another, so...
I don't know, Mr. Gisano, I think there's, the only contractors are three or four landscapers, and I think they just take, or tree surgeons. I asked my cousin today, who rents spaces there? He said, besides Mr. Nixon, Pride Chevrolet, and my cousin putting his own old neighborhood vehicles there, there's three or four landscapers or tree surgeons, and they take a few spaces each. But he didn't give me...
Anyone else have any questions with the petitioner? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition?
Yeah, yes.
In favor?
No.
You opposed?
We're opposing, we're opposed.
Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone close here, opposed, opposed, opposed? Anybody here opposed to this petition?
This is Mr. Samoyah, he's the owner of Collusion Auto Cracks Repair at 178 Alley Street. And he's owned the business since 2006. And the, at the time that he purchased the property, he was always allowed access over the Benia property from the street along a path, a horizontal path into his garage, and also egress.
Wait a minute, excuse me, is that across the street from where the petition is?
No, no.
It's on the same side?
It's adjoining, you see?
In other words, what's here is 175-189 Alley, it's on a left?
He's across the street, next to another lot that Mr....
Yeah, so this... So this has nothing to do with what we are talking about?
No, no, because again, Mr. Samoyah's property directly joins the Demakis property.
But on the same side as 175-1...
175...
But the verb is that he's...
Wait, wait, Mr. Mark, okay, give me a straight note on this. They're talking about way across the street.
My cousin owns, the hood plant is 72 and a half thousand square feet. The plan that I submitted with the petition shows another lot owned by my cousin across the street that's 47,000 square feet.
Yeah, but if they're talking about across the street, that's not before us.
But I think, just to give you some context, what he's saying is that his business is next door to my cousin's lot across the street, that's all. To try, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but I think that's...
That's exactly what it is. I mean, the plot plan shows that.
Yeah.
Shows where Nixon's, where you own a lot right here on Alley Street, 178-180.
178, I own just 178.
He owned that, and then the 170 Alley Street is now owned by Mr. Demakis.
Right.
And how much parking space do you have on your lot?
Very little, just around the building. Before I purchased the building, the previous owner of the land, or the body shop there, they tell me that that always gonna be an access to get in and out of my shop. I have three doors, three bay doors.
And you, I think we are... The Mr. Samoyah's issue is that he doesn't wanna lose that right of access from Alley Street, the question of the Demakis property, to be shut back. And so that's, that's his concern, issue.
There's no easement, though, right?
Well, yes and no, to this extent, the parcel that Mr. Samoyah owns was once a part of Black Beach, and it was, and that lot was cut out and conveyed back in 1946. So, at one time, it was in common ownership. And that's an important issue here, because even though there's no record right-of-way or record easement, the fact that a lot comes out of common ownership, there is implication of continued use, what they call implied easement. And since Mr. Samoyah entered in 2006, at the time it was in Benia ownership, he always had access from Alley Street, as I said, into and out of his garage, to get, you know, once he had repaired or untainted or publicized, worked on his automobile, to get it back out of his, out of his, onto Alley Street, into a safe parking area. And the concern here is that if the parking plan is approved, I really have no objection to the parking plan itself, but the concern, again, is continued access to Mr. Samoyah, to Mr. Samoyah's, to the Demakis property.
Someone divide that to him.
Well, what it is, is what happened is, he laid out these concrete barriers in front of my overhead door, and not to be bringing this, but I know he owns the lot, he's been bowling every single day, or I had to take all my sink, all my cars out of there because he's under construction, or he's trying to, but he brings these barriers that is very difficult for me to continue to do in business. And I said to him, "Listen, someone is wanting a portion, what I'm asking for you is, everybody, whoever you're gonna rent it out to, they're gonna have these right-of-way, you cannot just fence it there. I've been here, I'm gonna give a name, just let me in when my car's there." He says, "No, that's why you got the, that's why you got the lots across the street." I said, "But at the same time, you're pushing me against the wall and choking me. This is gonna be some easier to argue that, that it's been always a right-of-way, even with the Benia Brothers..."
Well, if it's not on the, on the legal papers, it is not a right-of-way. It's gotta be registered over there in the registry of deeds in Salem, and if you can't show that, you know, is there anything you can do to help this man out?
Look, you know, I don't know anything about that side of the street, I can't be prepared to speak on 175. But I would talk to my cousin about it today, and he told me he put up, he told me that Mr. Benia, Mr. Samoyah was parking on the old Benia property, and that he put up Jersey barriers to protect his own land, and he put, and he put them up well within the bounds of the, of his property, so that there would be no question...
He put it two, three, two, two and a half feet away.
So that there'll be no question...
Please try to...
There would be no question that the barriers weren't encroaching on anybody else's property. He brought them in from the boundary lines, and, you know, I'll...
Can you, can you get down there, I mean, I don't wanna see this held up because of a neighborhood dispute like that, and then try to help him out?
Look, I have a good, I have a good rapport with Mr. Sano, I mean, I'm not, I can't promise anything, because I do...
No, I understand that, but you've been always done the right thing around the city, and I'm just asking you, there's some ways that we can keep going with this.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, you know, in one way, it appears that the petitioner is renting him, but he's giving him off, off street path. So he is helping them out, yeah.
Well, I'm giving him a grant, 1,500, no problem with that. It's just accident to my shop. It was designed to have three bays, and I don't care the backside, but the front, beside, not the front, but the side, open, open door, I need that, it was important, that was the, that's why the building was designed, structure-wise, to have that access. And it's very, very uncomfortable, I can, I can get a car back in and I get the barrier. And it's very little, it's just a little corner, it's not like it's in the lot.
Yeah, you've gone over that, we understand. We have to proceed, there's other cases here we have to, yeah. And, you know, we're having a good time, but everyone does. Maybe he can help you over that, we can't relate that to what's before us. We can't force them, or say we wanna prove this because of a neighborhood dispute, that's what it is, right?
Anybody knows my cousin knows he's not a bully.
Same, Mr. Sano.
Well, and again, our purpose here is, that's why I said it was a limited objection, because we at least wanted to put it on the record. I realize we're dealing with a, with a legal issue here.
Yes.
And if there was an actual plan of the right-of-way, it'd be easy, but, as I said here, that the fact that this smaller lot came out of that bigger lot, under the law, that creates a presumption that whatever use was implied, may continue, and it may be a reasonable use, he had access to it from, and again, that had been the access that Mr. Samoyah had from the time that he purchased the property in 2006, for as long as the Benias and their successors owned the property.
Okay, well, will you please try to work on the...
Well, I'm willing to, sure.
Follow me, and come back the next time smiling.
I'm sorry, but Alvin renting me the building, I mean, the lots across, across the street, he went from under bait, rent me out there, because the profit is here, because he's gonna put more cars in there, and he's gonna park across the whole lot, not, on the whole yard there. So then, give me the better of that, give me the front of it, he's gonna get paid, he's gonna get rent.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe your cousin will be a good neighbor and help him out a little bit.
My cousin's a good neighbor all over West Lynn, you know?
Well, you know what I mean.
Yeah, I know.
He already had a little access there, maybe he'll help him out a little bit.
You know, quite frankly, I've known him for 70 years, and, and it just shocks me to hear Mr. Samoyah or anybody else say he's getting bullied, but my cousin...
Well, I'm the only one, he's there.
Wait, wait, we can't spend any more time on this.
Yeah, okay, so I'll talk to him, Mrs. Crowley.
You have to proceed with this case right here.
Thank you very much.
We're just trying to make everybody happy.
Anyone else here opposed to this petition? Anyone else close here, opposed, opposed? What is the wish of the board?
Mr. Chairman, there's a letter.
A letter?
It's addressed to, as we Jean Curly, chairperson in zoning commission. Dear Chairperson Curly, I would like to respectfully request your honorable body to grant the above mentioned petition being presented to you this evening by 175-189 Alley Street LLC. I feel that this is the best use for this property at this time, and it will alleviate multiple vehicles parked on the street. Thank you in advance for your assistance in this matter. Sincerely, Peter Capano, Councilor Ward 6.
Thank you. Okay. What is the wish of the board?
I'm making a motion to grant.
Motion made by Mr. Grant, Second Island.
Mr. Wood.
Mr. Wood.
Yeah.
Please follow.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Gisano?
Yes, to grant.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to grant.
Mrs. Crowley? Yes, to grant.
Thank you very much, everybody.
This one you're doing, one you make here, three? Let's still make one. I know.
You did that one. You did this one?
I know. I know that this.
You did this one?
Yeah, this one here. All right, next case, Stephen, is 330 Boston Street. Mr. Cole, can you read it?
330?
Yeah, 330, yeah.
Petitioner Key Lim to allow additions to an existing non-conforming single-family residence on an undersized lot, 7,024 square feet, having insufficient frontage to convert to a two-family in zoning district R4.
Thank you. I'm a here and a there for those of favor. Please inform if you have an address. What is your office age?
I'm a contractor. I'm his contractor. My name is Milton Santos, living in 56 East and Ever, Revere.
Okay, please, next case.
That is, we are looking to convert that single family into a two-family. There is a three, three stories, three floor already, and all those three floors is used by, is a bionic. And he is looking to convert the, that third floor, existing third floor living space into a second apartment. And for that, we have to, we are proposed to raise the roof on the rear room. That's something like 15 by 15, just to have, we have new wall on both sides of that room. So we want to raise it up just to have enough space for enough wall to, for cabinets.
What's the addition of what?
For cabinets. Because we have, we have new wall on both sides. For cabinets, cabinet floor. Yes. Yes. We have a new wall on both sides. So we want to raise it up just to have, modify the roof a little bit, just to put a cabinets on that wall.
That's existing ladder?
That is in a, that is on the back room.
That's, there's two additions, right?
Yeah, the addition is, one is fire escape, but that is in the same place that is existing little deck for the first floor.
You've got plans there to just stretch them out?
Yes.
Put them in the middle of the...
So the plot plan...
Or put them over that way, so everyone can see it. Explain that.
This is the, the lot. This is the addition of, we have existing small deck here. We're going to put a fire escape over here for the third floor. And over here, there is this corner, we're going to have...
Is it going to be an outdoor set of stairs?
Yeah, this one is going to be for private.
You mean the back, you're asking about the back?
The one you said, the fire escape. That's, that's on the exterior.
Yes, yes.
Inside or outside?
Outside, outside. Definitely be, connecting, definitely, yes. To connect this, the stairs and the third floor to here. The first floor and second floor, we have that already inside. But this is the new one for the third floor.
Where's the deck? The deck's in the middle of the alley?
They have, the deck is just to the left of first level. Little deck. So we're going to move it and put a fire escape, a staircase on that place, on this corner. Then on front, private entrance for the second floor, for the second unit.
Wait, that's, that's, tell me, say that again. That's, that's for the, that's another landing for the second floor?
The front ones, yes. There is a stair all the way to the third floor inside. We're going to do exterior, those for the, for the second unit. Just for, for private entrance, separate entrance.
So another exterior staircase?
Yes. Because the, there is inside, but we...
So you're going to have two separate means of egress?
Yes. One on the front, one for the first floor. Still, we have that.
Amen. Each apartment has two ways out? Is that what you're saying?
No. The apartment, we have all the way, stair go all the way up to the third floor inside. For the, the second apartment, we are looking to build a stairway.
Where's your floor plan? What are floor plans?
Floor.
Oh, it's on the floor.
Very, very clear for the fourth inch, but for you can, you can see.
What's existing, what's existing there now?
The existing? Is it, not for fourteen, but for the floor?
No, I need you to have a floor plan for the existing, for the existing. Do you have a floor plan?
Yeah, we, we do have it, but not, not here.
Why not?
Right, this is only for...
That's what you're all right with, the floor. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, this one shows only the, the video. And to split the first, the first, the first page, that is the most light we have now. And this is the staircase on the back.
Now, those staircases, why can't you enclose them? They'll be open in the winter with snow and ice on them all the way down there.
The, yes, the rear one.
Why can't you enclose them?
We can, we can enclose them.
Yeah, that's dangerous.
Yeah, okay, okay. We can enclose it.
We have speculation you enclose...
Yeah, we can do that.
And you'll match the building and everything.
Yes. Because this is the first idea to do something for a better price.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, just, just to save money.
It's not going to look good. This is a residential piece of property. It's going to be, look like it's in some sort of small group home institution use with the exterior staircases like that.
Right.
Two bedrooms for you?
On the third one, we have two, two bedrooms. How many bedrooms? Two, two bedrooms on each unit.
So six bedrooms now?
Yes, but both, both, both units.
That's two units.
Uh, no, two units. It's a three, three floors. First and second floor as a one...
But only two bedrooms. Just the second floor, like I have two bedrooms, a two-bedroom floor.
You have four, four bedrooms on the second floor.
And two bedrooms on the third floor.
Third floor, yes.
Six bedrooms now.
Yes.
How many bedrooms in there now?
You have two.
Two?
Yes, two bedrooms on the third.
How many are in the building now?
Six. Four on the first floor and a second floor, and two on the third floor. The third floor that we are looking to do in the second one.
How many on the first floor now?
First floor, we have no bedroom. No bedroom on the first floor.
No bedroom on the first floor now?
No.
What's there?
Second floor. First...
What's on the first floor now?
Is a kitchen and living room, back, in back.
Oh, I see. So it's a down, it's a two, two-floor hall?
Yes, yes. First and the second floor going to be one apartment.
This house, this house is 32 feet wide and 53 feet long. You're telling me it's two, two rooms on the first floor?
Two bedrooms, yeah. The first floor is...
Zero. How many bedrooms on the first floor?
No bedroom on the first floor.
How many rooms on the first floor now?
Kitchen, three, three rooms. Yes. But there is, there is a big space for staircase to go all the way to the second floor.
First floor has a living room and family room.
Your name and address?
Uh, my name's Key Lim. I address 330 Boston Street, R1.
So you lived there? You lived there?
Yes, I lived there. The first floor had a kitchen, dining room, living room, and family room. That's all. Uh, gym? No bathroom. Bathroom on the second floor.
And so, yes, and this is a, the, the petition going two to three?
No, it's a single going over two.
Yeah, single going over two. Single going through.
How many bedrooms on the second floor?
Four bedrooms.
How many?
Four.
Four bedrooms on the second floor?
Yes. Including the bathroom up there.
I ask you again, who, who drew these plans? You had a professional do it?
Yes. Jim, Jim, I forgot his name.
You see your name on there?
Yes, it says stair. Probably St. Paul's, New York or something. From Beverly.
Oh, from Beverly, alright. So if you, there's a stipulation you enclose those stairways, you could get a design to clarify that.
The rear?
No, I mean, you would need it. Speaking here, I'm going to do it ASAP, man.
How many in your family, sir? How many people live there?
Only one, one family.
No, but how many people?
I have only three people.
How many?
Three.
You and your wife and a, and a...
And my son.
There's not a lot of information. There's no layout of the house. There's no layout of bedrooms. There's no layout of any, any interior elevator. There's nothing showing anything about this house at all. This house is 53 feet long by 34 feet wide, and it doesn't say how many rooms are in this building right now.
No, it's not floor plans.
Before or after they're started. I mean, you're, you're giving them, have ones that ever wanted.
I know. You're going to have to re, you're going to have to refine these plans, clarify them. Especially like Mr. Gisano says.
Is it the plan to condom, condo this building?
Yes, it is not possible. This is two, two, two families.
No, because I'm saying this is a two unit condominium building, so I didn't know if this was...
I'd like to see what it looks like now and what it's going to look like after.
You're right.
At a minimum.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's, you're going to have to do that. Because everyone else has in the city who's in here. They always have a floor plan.
Okay.
Tiling together.
Okay.
I'm a favorite. I hope you're all in on it. I think it's a good idea for them, but not too late to plan it.
Okay.
So you better get them on. When is the next meeting? None of them?
It is March 20th.
March 20th is the next meeting? Would you have?
March 20th.
Okay.
What plans or what are we talking about to enclose the exterior stairways? Anything else that needs to be addressed on that plan?
No, I mean, it shows your egress. It shows your stairs. It shows, it just doesn't show the layout of the house. They give you 35 rooms in this house, and they're adding a bunch of exits. You know what I mean?
I know, I know that. All right. Let's, let's proceed. Anyone have any more questions other? Anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone else in favor of this petition? Anyone else opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition?
No, so we're in the...
Close a hand, close a close. What is the wish of the board?
There was a letter on this one.
Yeah.
Dear Mrs. Curly, Chairperson in Zoning Commission, 330 Boston Street, please be advised I have not been contacted by the petitioner nor the neighbors regarding the above-mentioned property. I stopped by the property earlier this evening. However, at this time, I will defer to your decision. Thank you in advance for your assistance. Peter Capano, Counselor Ward Six.
Who is it?
Counselor Capano.
Oh, Capano, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, you, you know, you should contact the counselor who's concerned about, no, contact him. So you're going to have to do that.
Go to the department, please.
Capano, yes. Anytime you're doing, you work on any city or town, you know, around, always contact your counselor.
Okay, I'm going to give you this letter.
Yes.
And you can call the council office. He's got two numbers right down there.
Explain to him.
Call Mr. Capano.
Okay.
Explain to him what you want to do. What is the wish of the board?
Continue to the March 30th, March 20th meeting?
Yeah, for the, for the conditions.
We have a full set of, you know, plans that show the exterior, current and proposed...
And the enclosures of this area. You understand what we want?
Yes.
Could you write it down so you don't forget it?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Someone, call us.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, Mr. Tim.
Mr. Sonno?
Mr. Continuum.
Mr. Cole?
Yep.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, to continue.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Please sign us please for continuation. Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, next case is 80th Mayfair Street, 984. Cole, can you read it?
Sure. Petitioner Costas and Canela Belissimus, close, by their attorney Samuel A. Becktally, to allow subdivision of an existing lot in zoning district R1 to create two undersized lots, 8,660 square feet and 7,724 square feet, and to allow construction of a single-family dwelling upon the smaller resulting undersized lot.
Public areas are one of those in favor?
I'm attorney of tally. With me, Costas and Canela. Again, this is one, I'll, I'll read what I filed, because I think it accurately reflects the current conditions. The petition I filed said allow the reconfiguration of lots with a single family thereon in the R1 single-family district, right X, with an existing single family thereon with less than the required of 8,660 square feet and Y, Y, 7,724 square feet, and to allow the construction of a new single family thereon on that Y. This is again, registered land. And why I don't believe it's a subdivision, because we're not taking one and dividing it into two. We're taking three and making it into two. Because as the registered land plan shows, it's three lots. Each of the lots is bigger than adjoining lots and has frontage greater than adjoining lots that have houses on. So when Costas and his wife built a home a few years ago, if you know the conditions up there, it's a lot of ledge and it's rocky. The city required for the construction of his own single-family home. And as the registered land plan shows, Mayfair was a, a private, un, way undeveloped. Not that they developed the road to the front of their house, but they developed the road to the length of the way, past their house. So, so it took them substantial money and time, and they completed that. And the city held a bond, and this is to build their single-family home. So they've expended thousands of dollars to improve the street on which extends, and they're the only house on the street. When you have registered land, you just can't tamper with the lot plans. I think we've talked about this before. The assessor, if you own lot, you own lot A, you own lot B, he sends you one bill, and he calls it for lot C, the sum of A and B. Because he doesn't want to send two tax bills to the same owner who owns both adjoining lots. So here they own three lots. If you look at the D, it says that they own 11A, 12A, and 13A. The D describes three parcels. The total's in excess of 16,000 something square feet, and the frontage is way in excess of 75 feet. What they propose to do is to take the three lots that they own, which the assessor can't change, and no one can change except the land court and the land court engineer, and the planning board, and make it into two lots. That's, that's step one. If you get to that, step requires the approval of land court engineers, which is another time-consuming and costly process. It's not easy. And assuming you can get that, then you have to go back to the planning board. But now the planning board should be happy, because they've already required, and they held the bond for the road to be built, and the road's got a finish coat, and it's got a sidewalk, and it's built. But it extends into no means land. And what they want to do is divide their three lots into two, their home on one, and be able to build a home on the adjoining lot. And that's the, the basis of their being before you, because the requirement in a single-family district is for 10,000 square feet. They have the requisite frontage. They just don't have 10,000 square feet. They have the requisite frontage, they just don't have ten thousand square feet. And given the conditions there, and the uniqueness of this parcel, and the conditions of the ledge, and a rocky area, I think that they've actually endured a hardship so far in terms of the cost that the city imposed on them to build a road that essentially services their single house and then extends down beyond. And what they wanna be able to do is to be, have the ability to build a home on the next lot, and take the three and, and essentially turn it to two. If you were to approve this, they still would have to go to the land court engineers, and that's a several-thousand-dollar, several-month process. And then they have to go, if the land court approves, the consolidation of three lots into two lots, there'd be a new land court plan. Land courts shall only call their plans A, B, C, D, as properties get developed. And then, uh, if that were to be done, what they would like to be able to do is to build a house on the new lot. The new house, and this house, conformed to every requirement except lot size. Each lot would have more than the required frontage. This home right now would meet the, uh, all the other dimensional unpacking regulations. Any home to be built would have to be built in accordance with all the required dimensional regulations, including frontage. So the only relief they're looking for is lot size. And so, uh, again, they just finished in July, uh, over a period of a couple of years, the completion of the roadway, and now, uh, a growing family, and they wanna be able to know that when, uh, they can get a sum of return in terms of the investment on the roadway, and be able to consolidate the three lots they have into two, one with the existing home and with a home, the other with a home to be built.
So lot, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So they bought the three lots, and they would have, that you'd have, you'd have a, a legal lot of...
Well, they had a lot in fire in excess. If you look at the field card, uh, the assessors only tax you, if you're in a single-family district, and you had a single-family home. They tax you for ten thousand square feet at X, and then the assessors at Y.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, they bought the three lot packets so they could put a house on that, because it would admit, it met all requirements.
Well, they didn't, but they didn't... I'm believing, they didn't know that they were gonna have to put a road.
I'm just stating a fact.
Yeah, oh, I'm just telling the facts that they didn't realize that the city, even though they had the requisite lot size, required a road, a, a completed road to be built with curbs and sidewalks.
And he bought the land off of the abbot, who still owns the land that, basically, the road now goes up to.
Right, goes all the way to the end.
To his part, to his, he now has frontage in, in...
Uh, not, not frontage.
Not frontage, but he's got, the road goes up.
Exactly, goes all the way to the end.
It would be the side, it would just on Rockdale, so it would be the side of his, um, but we were, um...
So it extends that way. That was not an anticipated, uh...
Who, who owns the land on the other side of Mayfair Street for me? That, that looks like these, like, that there's, if you look at it, it looks like there were lots and foundations that are...
Yeah, there was a big, big space.
That are planned out. Who owns that land, you know? Across the street, right across the street from you.
That's Nick Hatches.
He owns all that too.
Who does?
Hatches, Nicky, Nicky's from Nicky's Sub.
Who sold him this land?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So that, um, yeah, but they imposed the requirement building a road.
So at some point, those lots will be developed, you think?
Well, the road's there now. I think you can get one more, this house, on that side. It used to be a private, I mean, the land court had it as, if you look at it, that it was a private way. That's what they rely on, they thought...
Uh, no, I'm just saying, because if...
Not as made it into a public board.
If, if we, if we shrink from the, from the ten thousand square foot, then the rest of those could maybe get laid out as well.
Well, but if you look at the existing houses now...
This is what we did for this, and so everyone should be now...
Yeah, but if you look at what's there now, that, that's part of their reasoning. What's there now is they, they're on a lot that's two and a half times bigger than every other house lot with a house on it.
But, you know, um, and that's a, I, I know that property, I know you get it from Maryland Way, Maryland Street, but I'm just saying, the original zoning of it, when Ward One was for, for mass development like that, and I don't call that mass, but that's quite a few, that, the, 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 the standard would be ten thousand square feet. That's all I'm saying. That was the purpose, is where you gotta link it.
But the board was given relief many times.
I'm not saying we're not, I'm just stating a fact. This is sort of cutting across, now, okay, so they had the lots, and now they're cutting it back. Uh, they spend extra money on the street, but I'm just saying, and we set, uh, a, a, a precedent here for the rest of the, that this is developed, that they can come in and expect that they can get lots for under ten thousand.
The lots, the lots that they have, remaining, eight and six, are larger than the existing lots or houses on right now. So going at eight and six, yeah, it's not ten, but look at the, look at the land court plan of the adjoining lots and their lot sizes.
Yeah.
And they have loans on it.
It's all gonna get...
Wouldn't, if they were setting developing lots, wouldn't they develop them at ten thousand square feet?
Well, that's what this one was. This one was sold it for one house, and now being dropped into two. I'm, I'm just, I know, I'm just stating a...
Why didn't they sell it at ten thousand and set size?
There were three lots.
Because the land court has a plan. And the plan, in other words, if you added three, four thousand square foot lots, or whatever, you got to... So that the lots that were laid out by somebody prior to them were lots, and these are described as eleven A, twelve A, thirteen A. They're on that land court plan. And to get over the ten thousand, you couldn't, they, they got three lots, that got them to sixteen thousand something.
So, so why, why, why this little lot up here? Why not, why didn't they divide it right down the middle, and then you would have...
Because they wanted to make sure that they could keep their home with meeting all the requirements, including frontage. And that the lot that got created would meet all the requirements except lot size. So you have two lots that need, and exceed the frontage of all the adjoining lots, that are larger than the adjoining lots. And if one has an existing house on it, they wanna build a house on the other.
But we have three lots.
There's three lots on the land court plan.
Rick, you gotta look at this.
You look at the D, here's the land court.
See the color?
See, it was black?
Okay, those are the three lots.
Anytime you see Alex P. is land court.
Yeah, Alex C. is registered land, but here's a D, and it describes the lots right here, it's three parcels. One, two, three. And it's known as, what, eleven A, twelve A, thirteen A, on that registered land. And at the time, it said it was a private way. On the way. Now, that's been, was a requirement that be completed, and they did it.
So this plot plan, you come to us for permission to build in this lot, you're not showing any foundation size, so there's no, there's no...
Well, I, I can show you, I had Mr. Reed, and I asked him to stake it, but apparently he didn't. But I had a plan drawn that showed you could put a building, and I, I think I have it, a building envelope, but we're not asking for invariances other than, oh, that is the plan, good read, okay, thank you. So, um, here's a, here's a plan with a building envelope that shows a ten-foot setback, a seven-and-a-half-foot sideline, a fifteen-foot, uh, a seven-and-a-half, but the building wouldn't be anywhere near this big. It's what he called an envelope, because it's sixty-five by seventy. So clearly, you can put a house there and two parking spaces, and meet all the dimensional regulations and the parking regulations, and the lot would be two thousand three hundred and something square feet, less than ten thousand.
You still have work to do on the existing house?
No, other than the answer to this question.
You don't even have any railings on the stairs?
I'm sorry?
No railings on the stairs?
Those are required.
I didn't say that'd be quiet, I just thought it was a surprise.
Yeah, no, those passed inspection, that's how we wanted the house, we didn't...
What's not required, I didn't hear you.
It's not required, you said?
Where?
Oh, the regular railings, uh, the stairs are replaced by, there's a required...
Wait a minute, which stairs you're talking about?
The front stairs.
Front stairs, railers are not required?
The buildings facility have to have them.
That's news to me. Cause all over, like, a couple of rises, yeah. Alright, well...
The only reason I ask is because she's pregnant, and I can't imagine her going down those stairs and not having a railing to hold on, that's all.
I mean, I'm just telling you what I...
No, I, I, that's, you know, from woman to woman, that's all.
We can put some in, it's not...
No, I don't care, I mean, I'm just thinking of her.
So, um, Mr. Cole, I have two concerns, um, if I may. Uh, my name's Costas Blismus, Adrian Chris.
Wait a minute, say that real slow, you just went over my head.
I'm sorry, Costas.
What's your name?
My name's Costas Blismus, and I currently live at eighty eighth Air Street.
Alright, yeah.
Um, those three, those lots with the three foundations you're, you have concern about, those are all frontage on Rockdale.
Yeah, Rockdale, yeah.
Yeah, on Rockdale. So what we're asking, wouldn't it affect them in any way? And if you look at, if you look at the layout, it's all, um, their backyard, nothing's really developed, it's all ledge.
Yes, well, that's...
It's all ledge, they can't do anything. Past those three, basically, those three lots are already developed. You can't, you can't do anything back there. You know, it's all ledge, um, and we were required by the city, we to run a sewer line, a water line, and pave the street all the way up. And if you look at the end of my street...
And hydrants.
It goes...
Yeah, with the hydrant.
Yeah, you have the hydrants, and everything.
We put it all the way up, and it runs up this street that we were required to put in just to build our single-family home, runs all the way up to this twenty-foot ledge that has nothing but woods and more ledge behind it. So it's basically a road to nowhere, and when we first, um, when we first presented the plan to the planning board, uh, we had Ralph Reed draw out a plan that we would only develop the street enough for us to build our home. And that was denied to us, so we were required again to put in the sidewalks, hydrant, and run everything.
And water and sewer line.
Because, and also, we were, we were required to run a water and sewer line all the way up that could support more homes. So because of that, I'm, we're petitioning now to be able to put another home to use what we were basically required to do in the first place.
And, and the process was such?
Thank you.
You had to post the money. You had to put the money up.
Had a bond.
And bit of a bond, right. I mean, they're not, you know, subdivision developers. And, and because I said to them, why did it take so long? He said, because of cash law. Because we, we couldn't find a contractor who would work on the theory that, well, the money's sitting over there. They wanted the money. They had the money. But the city had it.
So getting back to showing us a, uh, basically the, the exterior boundaries of the lot, but nothing of even a footprint of what a house would look like.
I, I asked Reed to, to stake it, I'd be glad to have him stake it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd like to see.
But I said to Costas, he, he, and I asked Reed, he said, I said, why is it so big? He said, it's, it's a building envelope. He meant was so big that you could put a house within there, but there's no house that's gonna be seventy by whatever he's got there.
So can we, can we see that and stake it out?
Yeah.
I mean, think about...
Because I said to him, no house, I mean, look at the size of the house, it's nowhere near there.
No. But, yeah, I mean, I think that's normally what we would vote on, would be at least...
Yeah, and I had asked him, and then, when I realized he didn't, I said, I gotta have something that demonstrates that the only thing I want is a variance for lot size, not for frontage setback, re, uh, sideline.
Yeah, Mr. Cole, we wanna continue with that.
Yeah, just for a month, and let him...
Alright, you have no, no checks, so...
If we, yeah, I mean, we can, if we can wait a month, give us something that we can vote on and see, that's what the...
Can you hang on that one?
That's the size of the house.
Yeah, I, I had asked him.
We're not asking who to hang on.
I'm gonna stop bringing, I'm, I'm gonna stop bringing pregnant women to these...
God love them.
If you remember Anthony, who was here on Minut Street? He was here tonight, I don't know why he was here, I'm gonna have to phone him. Remember, his wife was expecting like any day, when we were here last, he was out back here.
Maybe he just enjoys it.
Yeah, alright.
Alright.
Let's see if we can proceed.
Yeah.
And, uh, anyone else in favor of this petition? You have none opposed, and opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? I don't see anyone. Over here on this code, uh, what is the wish of the board?
Just continue it, continue it so that we can at least see the, what the footprint is gonna be on the, on the, uh, the new house lot.
Okay.
So we can see the dimensions and stake it out, please.
Yeah, you understand that?
Yeah, no, I understand.
But can I also, I would like to see the lot, stake the lot itself, and then I would like to see the house.
Okay, so stake the floor.
You know what I mean?
Stake the floor line.
And then the house?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can get the plans to lay it on here, through the, you know, through, through a stripping.
Yeah.
And then, what prints of the house?
Take this to work tomorrow.
Yeah, that was...
Yeah.
Uh, let's go to a vote on that. Did someone second?
Sir?
Second, uh, I missed the word.
Yeah, I made a motion and, so, we're all set. Yeah.
Yeah, cool, next one I'm gonna mean, I'll, uh, call...
Mr. Wood?
Yes, I'm in.
Mr. Giusano?
Yes, I'm in.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Okay, good luck, we'll see ya. We'll see you in a couple, get in a couple...
Sam?
Thank you.
Sam?
Okay, we have two more.
We might have two more cases, we only got one person.
I'll call, I'll call.
She should do the twenty-first, right?
Okay, the next case we have, this gentleman in the back, is thirteen, thirteen O'Leary Place. Mr. Cole, could you read that?
Which one are we doing?
Thirteen O'Leary.
You sure? Are you sure you wanna do that one? So, thirteen O'Leary. Petitioner William Butt, to allow demolition and reconstruction of a nine-by-nineteen first-floor addition to an existing single-family residence located upon an undersized lot, four thousand two hundred and seventeen square feet in zoning District R2 that encroaches within the minimum rear setback.
Thank you. Hey, public areas, I'll, those in favor, make it before. State your name and your address.
Mark Fornia, sixty-three Commonwealth Road, Lynn.
Okay, you can proceed.
Um, well, uh, this is a continuation, we needed to see some more, um, uh, plans on what was happening there.
And you specified all of that?
Yes, I did, and, um, so, basically, we're just, uh, taking down what's there, uh, replacing the same size on the same footprint, um, single-story.
So we got your plans?
Yeah.
Well, what I didn't see was the revised plot, uh, plot plan over here.
Uh, for what?
Because this one has the, the entrance and the deck on the right-hand side.
Yeah.
You know, you, uh, you came in and explained, oh, the windows going there, and the sliders are going on this side of it.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, you, you did what you were supposed to do, but this didn't get done. But, I mean, if people are comfortable with this, I don't, we can, we'll proceed as long as they get this in, Ralph Reed, by the time that she files it.
Right, yeah.
Okay. But I don't know if anybody else has any, any questions or not, but this is...
I don't.
You know?
I don't have any.
No.
I think he's gonna do a good job, I mean...
Absolutely.
He always does a good job.
Forty years, so...
Anyone, you, you finished?
Yes.
Yeah, anyone else in favor of this over here? And if anyone opposed, and it's all empty chairs, I guess. So what is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant addition with stipulation that they would just submit a revised plot plan showing the, the revised, um, structure.
Entrance.
Entrance.
Okay, you understand that?
Yes.
You'll get on that now.
We're gonna give it to him, what?
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Second.
I don't know.
Second, Mrs. Curly, call room.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Sono?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Do you wanna take this so you can show them?
Mr. Cole?
I have, I have a copy.
Yes.
I have a copy.
You do. So you know what, you know what we're looking for?
Mr. Callen?
Yes, we're gonna show you the, uh...
Mrs. Cole, you know?
Yes.
And just get him down to Mary.
Yeah.
That's all.
All set?
Yep.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry about the interruption.
Thank for your patience.
Yeah, we're just gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, now, now there's two cases, there's, there's no shows here. One of...
Well, we have a letter. We have a letter on one case, if you want me to read it.
Windsor Ave, yeah, please read that.
We have a letter regarding Windsor...
On the hiring?
Windsor Ave, that's the deck on the back.
I know the hiring, it's called some hiring.
Oh, so, um, this is from Crystal Barrera. My name, my name is Crystal. I spoke, uh, this is Director to Mary Gilchrist. I spoke to you, uh, you on Friday about the hiring. We are supposed to attend on, on 20/20, so I'm sure she means, yeah. We will need more time to get our lands survey. You mentioned the next, um, hearing is on 3 March 20th. Please confirm we are okay to attend on that day. Feel free to email or call me if you have any questions or concerns. So a motion would be in order to continue this case?
Yes. I hear a motion.
Motion to continue.
Sorry, yeah. Call room.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Sono?
Yes, continue.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes, to continue.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes, to continue.
All right, now, the other one is, uh, 150 S3. Mr. Cole, can you read the, the wording on that?
Yeah, that was petitioner Paul U. by his attorney, John Myhouse, to allow conversion of an existing two-family structure located in zoning district R4 upon an undersized lot, 5,180 square feet, with front, rear, and side yard enclosures to a three-family structure.
Okay, what is the wish of the board on this?
Why isn't he here? Why isn't he here? Do we know?
We don't know. We sent him a letter, so maybe he wants to...
Do we allow, do we have enough time to allow us to continue in March? Is the, Mary?
March 20th.
Is there, is there still?
Hold on, let me look at the meeting now.
If you know, you should call the mayor.
Yeah.
How much, how much extra time? Maybe it's getting close, isn't it?